Good evening. Welcome to the June 21, 2021 meeting of the Revere City Council. All rise and salute the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Role club of the members, Councilor Janino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councilor Keefe is absent. Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novaselski.
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councilor Rotundo.
Present.
Here, Councilor Sorino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Visconti.
Here.
Here, and Council President Zambudo.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of June 14.
So moved.
All in favor, all opposed? Still voting?
Calendar item number three, that the city council will award a certificate of appreciation to the city's engineering and water and sewer departments in recognition of their efforts in completing major stormwater improvements in the Toscano Avenue neighborhood to correct the flooding issues which have been unresolved for over 20 years.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, "The City of Revere: A Certificate of Appreciation. An acknowledgement of the city's engineering and water and sewer departments' outstanding efforts in completing major stormwater improvements in the Toscano Avenue neighborhood to correct longstanding flooding issues which have plagued this area of our community for 20 years. Special recognition is hereby accorded to," and I have everyone from the different departments, "Don Caramella and Joseph Lake, and witness whereof this certificate of appreciation is gratefully bestowed by the city council of the city of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizens this 21st day of June and the year of our Lord 2021 and of the independence of the United States of America, the 244th. Attested whereby Ashley E. Melnick, the city clerk, Anthony T. Zambudo, the council president, and offered by both myself, Councilor Sorino, and Council President Zambudo." So congratulations. And if I just might say very briefly, when I was running for council two years ago, there was an awful rainstorm, and Mr. Falzone will remember this, in like September of 2019. And this was a regular occurrence every time there was a heavy rain. But the entire part of Asti Avenue near the corner of Toscano Avenue and then at the front of Geneva Street, it became almost like a lake. And Mr. Falzone, who is not, you know, not as young as I am, was standing out in the middle of the street, and he had a yellow rain jacket, and he's yelling and swearing at the people that are coming because they, he wanted them to slow down because people are just coming down speeding down Asti Ave. And what that was doing was when the water, when the cars would hit the water, it would splash and create literally waves down Toscano Ave, onto Mr. Falzone's property, onto the properties of his neighbors, and it was, it was just an entire lake. And for years and years, as we had heavy rains, those issues happened. And it was because of Mr. Caramella over here, and Mr. Lake, and our city's water and sewer departments, and the foresight of Mayor Rego, that we finally were able to solve that issue. And the city did a lot of work this past fall on the main drain, and you know, perhaps Donnie might want to speak a little bit about it, but it really corrected the issue. And right now, when it rains, there's just a little bit of, a little puddle, nothing compared to what it was. It's not affecting the properties, and it's a, it's a win. So, thank you, gentlemen, and I appreciate your hard work. Thank you.
Let me just, let me just say that some people might be wondering why we're honoring the chief of infrastructure and one of his lead men at the DPW. But this, Mr. Falzone will tell you, this was a major accomplishment. This was something that nobody could get under control for more than 20 years, and this, this was quite an accomplishment. So, these, these gentlemen deserve recognition, and that's what they're getting tonight. Well, let's hold the certificate up.
It's like homework. I want to thank the crew. They really deserve the credit. They're very diligent about keeping the trash rack clear, and we have a, an understanding of what goes on at that Asti Ave-Toscano area. We understand that, that four-by-eight box culvert that was installed in 1955 underneath the expressway can't handle the amount of flow that goes through that area. So, you know, we've identified what the issues are, and we have Phase Two and Phase Three projects that we're ready to implement, which is taking the drainage from these Sargent Street area and the Malden Street area and divert it away from that box culvert. So, we understand the issues, and we're working to further correct the problem. But the credit goes to my DPW staff for maintaining the, the free-flowing culvert that goes underneath the expressway, and we, we, they just keep an eye on it all the time. We certainly don't want the residents in that area to suffer what they've been suffering for 20 or 30 years now in that area. So, thank you very much.
I'll just, I'll just leave it like this. These guys work real hard, and we've made a lot of infrastructure improvements in, in Donnie's tenure, in Mayor Rego's tenure, that, you know, really go unnoticed, like the Yeman Street, the 24-inch parks. We've done so much infrastructure lately under this new administration. I'd just like to thank everyone in this council for believing in the DPW, believing in the guys that are in the DPW. I'll tell you right now, for, I've been here 16, 17 years, this department never had the pride that it has now. I'd like to thank everyone sitting at this council, and especially Mayor Brian Rego. Thank you.
an affordable housing trust fund.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Proponents, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to this honorable council. I do want to start by saying it is really, really good to see all of you in person in the same room, without any plexiglass, without any masks. That's a little different, a little weird, but it's really good to see all of you and be up here before all of you. I am proud to voice my support on behalf of the establishment of an affordable housing trust fund this evening, because this fund is going to be a key part of what we do and a significant tool in our city to ensure that our neighborhoods retain their hard-working character and that we proactively prevent displacement of current residents. As I'm sure you will hear from our neighbors, and as I know all of you know, the cost of living in our community has been rising in large part due to a lack of housing stock. In order for the city to grow responsibly and for the benefit of our residents, it will be extremely important to keep in mind the housing crisis that currently disrupts our city, our region, and even our country. So, as we have seen in the past several decades, Revere has thrived as a diverse, welcoming community for families, immigrants, and more importantly, and most recently, I should say, young professionals. Maintaining diversity not only in culture, but also in income level, profession, family size, and several other demographics will allow the city to continue to grow responsibly, with the benefits both welcoming new residents and delivering a high quality of services to those families who have sculpted Revere for generations. I am proud to say that the process for creating this ordinance delivered opportunities for residents to engage in the political process and ultimately shape the future of their community. Through an informational question-and-answer session that we held, through posts that we've put online, and surveys that we've circulated, and through a workshop that enabled residents to help have input into this ordinance, the process by which we come to you tonight really reflected the fact that our residents have the deepest understanding of what affordable housing means for their families and for our neighborhoods. With dedicated sources of funding, which is included in this trust fund, a board of critical thinkers with a wide range of expertise and a mandate to utilize funds to optimally support affordable housing, housing stability, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund will be a dynamic force in our city's future picture. I stand before you, and I hope the passage of this ordinance comes with no reservations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, before I call on other proponents, the mayor spoke the longest and is going to get as much time as he got, but everybody else, I'm going to ask to finish in a minute or a minute and a half, because I, I understand a lot of people want to speak, and we've already started over a half hour late. So, please, brevity, but please feel free to come up and, proponents.
Mr. Chairman, I'll try and keep it short. No, I promise. I'm sorry, Ed DeVoe, 216 Crescent Ave, Beauchamp, Massachusetts. I won't say the other one. When I, when I was notified about, about this, this proposal and ordinance, I, I thought about it for a little while and read up on some of the things about, you know, why affordable housing is needed, you know, and things that all of you know about, how it benefits healthcare and for families, and educational opportunities for families, and economic opportunities. And I guess the biggest thing that comes out of this whole thing is that we all need to think back that in the 20s and 30s and 40s of the 20th century, there were many programs that were put in place that gave rise to the middle class of this country, which gave rise to the economic boom that became this country. Since the 21st century, that middle class has been in decline, and there's a huge gap between the haves and the have-nots today. So, this kind of program is a means for trying to give back strength and to rebuild that middle class. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thanks, thanks for the brevity. Name an address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Fatu Drami. I am, I live on 30 Park Avenue, Revere. I am speaking today in support of the Affordable Housing Trust Ordinance. I have been working in this city for 17 years. I am a renter, and I'm also a city employee, but right now, I am afraid that I'm going to be displaced because I can't afford to rent a one-bedroom apartment. Three years ago, I tried to buy a house, just a condo for two-bedroom condo. I couldn't find anything. I ended up renting with someone else, and that person is getting married. Now, for the past two months, I've been looking for a one-bedroom apartment, and I could not afford because of the rent. And lately, my conversation with so many people is that people are looking for other options because they can't afford to rent in Revere. And data has shown that half of Revere residents are eligible for affordable housing, but only 15% are right now in affordable housing. So, for me, this housing trust fund is something that is going to create that structure for the city to be able to buy, build, and also try to restock the natural affordable housing for everyone, give opportunity to all kinds of homeownership in the city. So, I am asking all of you today to please vote. Thank you for the certificate of appreciation, but also I want you to help me to stay in this city because I love, love this city, and I wanted to stay here, and I want to continue doing my work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Name an address for the record, please.
Hi. Hi, everybody. My name is Blanca Bedoya. I live in 277 Lincoln Street. Came here to this city 25 years ago, and I have my small business for 19 years, and I work for, I have a small part-time job for the Revere Public Schools. My son born here, he go to the school, to the kindergarten, and he graduated last year. And for some reason, we has to move to our house. And my husband and I, we're looking for a one apartment to rent. Well, that's impossible for us. It's so difficult finding out one apartment, and I'm thinking, what are I doing with my work? What are I doing? I live in here, I know this, only this city. And I, I like to, guys, please vote yes today, because I don't want to leave this city. I don't want to leave to this beautiful city. And I'm feeling so sad to live from here because I have my half-life in this city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Name an address, please.
My name is Pam. Do you guys hear me?
Put it there.
Oh, good. Awesome. Thank you, guys. My name is Pam. I live in North Gate Apartments, and what's been going on in my life, the rent keeps going up, and I want to stay here. That's my goal. I don't want to inconvenience my family. Sometimes it gets to a point where, you know, I have to call my brother or my sister, can I live with you? And I don't want to do that. I want to stay here. So, please, please, please vote yes. Thank you, guys. I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Name an address for the record, please.
Mi nombre es Elsa Cerna. Yo vivo en la 394 Ocean Avenue de Riviera. Llevo tres años en la Ciudad de Riviera. En este momento soy miembro de la organización DEWIC. Apoyo la accesibilidad en el pago de renta, ya que en este momento soy testigo de vivir en un país que está lleno de oportunidades para todo el mundo, en el cual nosotras las mujeres, cabezas de familia, hemos hecho sacrificios en este país debido a la pandemia para pagar nuestro pago de renta. Pienso que el pago de renta en este momento ha sido unos montos altos para todas las madres, cabezas de familia, en las cuales tenemos hijos. Tenemos que luchar por nuestros hijos para llevarlos a las escuelas, trabajar, en el cual en este momento las oportunidades laborales son muy bajas para nosotras, y tenemos que tener en este momento mucho apoyo de ustedes para que tengamos una renta mucho más accesible. Yo pienso que ustedes serían un apoyo para todas las mujeres que en este momento vivimos en la Ciudad de Riviera, para que nosotros podamos tener más oportunidades laborales y poder tener un mejor futuro para nuestros hijos y para la sociedad.
Thank you very much. Name an address, please.
I'm going to translate what she said, because the interpreter called in.
Okay, thank you.
If that's okay. My name is Elsa, and I live in Ocean Avenue, and I'm here to talk about the affordable housing issue, and I hope that you can influence and, with your power, can help us because it's really an issue. We can't afford anymore. We really love this city. We want to support our kids. Our kids are going to the public schools, but it's, it's impossible for us to afford rent. And I hope you can consider to help women in Revere as a member of WE, an organization that I've been working. It's, I, I've been dealing with a lot of affordable housing people.
Mr. Counsel. Thank you. I'm here to talk about, on behalf of Sylvia Arweta, who has an emergency with her family and couldn't be here today, and she asked me if I can read her message, if you allow me. Go right ahead.
My, my name is Sylvia Arweta. I live on First Hensley Square. I am speaking today in support of the Affordable Housing Trust Ordinance. I am a member of Women Encourage and Empowerment. I've been living in Revere for about eight years, and has been a great city to live. It has always had a lot of offer to offer to us. We have lived in the same house for almost seven years now. Becoming a member of WE and my community was inspired by the act of faith everyone has for Revere. I have always been someone to help out and be a team member, so Revere has helped me spark once again my passion to help. Affordable housing is extremely important for me and many others. Making a space into home is not easy, but in the right community, it feels just perfect. Sadly, since affordable housing has not been part of this act, my family and I have to leave Revere and move to another city, where I will leave behind my passion for helping people and such a deep roots we have all made with friends at this community. My teenager kids will have to either change jobs or commute farther to be able to go work moving to another city. My two youngest daughters as well study in school, and their education in Revere will have to transfer to another city, which is sad because they had already made some wonderful connections with teachers, staff, as well me. I am the community representative for the Revere in Mass Up City Coalition. I am a leader to 15 ambassadors who act on fighting against COVID-19. Moving to another city could be a better situation at this moment for me, since we can no longer afford to be here, living in this wonderful city. Along with having one more bedroom adds to a lot of more opportunity. Leaving Revere is very devastating for all that we would love to have and we have to give up. Affordable housing is something that can help support many families with inspirations and dreams to make a home, to freely and peacefully be able to enjoy the wonderful opportunity Revere has to offer to many of the residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Name an address, please.
Yes. My name is Ina Tal, and I live at 100B Florence Avenue. I've been a Revere resident for 16 years right now. My daughter basically went to school all of her life here in Revere. She's 16. And we love the city, you know, we've been welcomed here, but it's just so expensive. We are renting right now. We've been renting for 16 years. We had a dream of buying a home, and that did not happen because the prices were too expensive. But yet, on the other hand, you know, we feel like we're paying basically mortgage prices but for rent, and it's just unacceptable. There's something that needs to be done. We see all these beautiful buildings being, you know, coming up and being built, but there's nothing for us. Like, we're here, we're working hard during the pandemic, we're waking up early to help the city of Revere, we're delivering diapers, and we're delivering food, and yet, we don't get anything. We just want housing, a place where we can raise our family, a place where we can get together and just be Revere residents and enjoy it and be the same that you guys are. But we feel that there is a disconnect, like, we're not getting the same as others, and we just want, you know, fairness and justice in housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Name an address, please.
Good evening. My name is Laura Holmes. I live at 243 Campbell Avenue, and I'm also an active member of the Revere Housing Coalition. And it's really a thrill to be able to be here and in support of this terrific ordinance, and I, I think it has a lot of support, and I love being on that side of things in this town. I just want to share a couple of data points that I think inform the reasons why, I hope you all will pass this. Revere has lower median incomes than Everett, Lynn, Malden, Chelsea, but we pay the highest median rent. Right now, six families, six families living in Revere right now are eligible for every one affordable housing here. So, for every one affordable housing, six families are eligible, but only one is going to get a, a place to live. The new units being advertised as affordable are micro-studios at 1700 and one bedrooms starting at 1900 without utilities. None of these units will be required to remain affordable, and none are guaranteed to remain affordable. And just in the news today, I heard them talking about how all indicators predict that they're going to be the highest rent increases ever seen now post-COVID. They're just going to start to increase them and increase them over the next few years. We know that TND recently completed a really nice new building on Beach Street with 51 new affordable units, and they received 1,450 qualified applications for 51 apartments. Meanwhile, 3,000 new market rate units have been built, and 2,500 more are coming to Suffolk Downs. This development is terrific, don't get me wrong, but if we had an ordinance and some structures to provide for affordability, if just 10% were matched with affordable units, we would already have 500 affordable units on track for our community, and that would be a great start. Nearly a third of the cities and towns in Massachusetts, including our neighbor communities of Chelsea, Malden, Salem, Saugus, and Somerville, have established impactful affordable housing trusts like the one you all are considering here. We can and should establish this affordable housing trust. It's truly an exciting time to live here in Revere, undergoing a renaissance in housing and economic development. We have much to be proud of, as we can see and feel from this strong turnout at tonight's community engagement. There will never be a better time for Revere's renaissance, to show so show our commitment to residents, to inclusion, to stabilizing our neighborhoods long into the future. We can and should afford, establish this affordable housing trust. Thank you so much for voting to pass on this ordinance.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing that, we're going to close that sided hearing.
I just have--
We got to read some stuff into the record.
No, it's just, three proponents had submitted a letter in favor of this ordinance by email, TND, Keith Fisher, and Vanny Hutt.
All right, we have one other.
Sorry, I thought that--
Name an address for the record, please.
My name is Shelley Garing. I'm a senior program manager at MHP, Mass Housing Partnership. I, my address is in Dorchester, but I'm here to support this ordinance, this effort in Revere. Tech, your director of the Office of Planning and Development, reached out to MHP a few months ago, requesting some technical assistance to move this-- months ago requesting some technical assistance to move this initiative forward in Riviera. We've paid attention to some of the work that you're doing with some of our partners, MAPC and CHAPA through the municipal engagement initiative, and we were eager to support Riviera in this effort. We know that cities like Riviera, Chelsea, Everett are experiencing tremendous housing pressures and we appreciate that and want to support your effort in creating your housing, building your housing infrastructure. The mayor referred to a trust as a tool and we see that in a similar way. It won't solve all of your housing problems immediately, but it will be a tool that you can use to start really focusing on addressing your, the housing needs that you've identified and really establishing goals and then moving forward with those. We've appreciated the collaborative nature that the mayor and his administration have taken, a willingness to reach out to the Riviera Housing Coalition and other housing activists to really engage them and to hear their concerns directly. At this point, the state has, we have about 120 communities that have affordable housing trusts. And just this last year during the pandemic, six or seven communities have established a trust. I know six or seven more that are working on it this year. So you're not alone in this. We have many communities that are identifying needs and seeing this as a valuable tool to move forward. So we are continuing to support the city in any way that we can moving forward and thank you for hearing this evening.
Thank you for your time. Okay, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Any opponents, people opposed to the trust? Seeing none, city councillors. Councillor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want the people out here to know that every single day we get calls for housing. Today I got a call for a woman who had one kid, one child, and her sister died and she ended up taking the two children. She's going to lose her house. She can't afford the rent. And you know, day after day when we get these calls, yes, there are times when we do help, but there are times when we can't help. And it kills me not to help my fellow residents and constituents and people that I've grown up with that they're going to move out of Beachmont or Ward 1 or Riviera when they've lived here all their lives. They've raised their kids here. The kids went through the public schools and now they have to leave and it kills me. So I am definitely in favor of this. I will join your meeting and help you. I'll do whatever I can to support this housing bill ordinance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Rotundo.
Thank you. Going back to Overlook Bridge when that was built, then Tom Ambrosino, we had asked to create an Affordable Housing Trust Fund. As was pointed out tonight, for every one unit that is being built by the neighborhood developers, 28 applicants for that one particular unit, 1,451 people. City of Riviera is expanding exponentially and it's hurting people. Pero nosotros te apoyamos. Recuerde eso. We support you. We want this affordable trust fund because it's important for everybody, not just you, not just me, but for everybody. And the mayor should be applauded for moving forward with this. This is a great starting point. I would like to envision something that we do or what we see in Boston, when you have a developer that builds hundreds of units, then at least 10% of them are for affordable housing. That's what needs to be done. That's what I fought for when HYM was here. That's what I was looking for. Now we're headed towards that precipice. So I support this 110%. We support you. We fight for you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Morabito.
Thank you, Mr. President. So tonight we heard some of our speakers talk about the difficulties to stay afloat and to just to put a roof over their house. These are the struggles that many are facing throughout our city, not just the speakers tonight. It's the struggle that people are facing and have been facing over the years. The establishment of this trust fund will not only take public input from the residents in this community, but it will carry out programs to help low income to moderate income residents in our community. But more importantly, like I said before, the mayor is welcoming the public input of our residents, the very people this affect. So I'm 100% in favor of this when it comes to a vote.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor. Any other councillors? Okay, this is going to go to Legislative Affairs and Zoning Joint Committee.
Calendar item number five, hearing called as ordered on an ordinance establishing rules and regulations relative to the West Riviera Dog Park.
Proponents? People in favor? Name an address, please.
Good evening. Dimple Rana, 49 South Ave. I'm a proponent of rules and regulations for Riviera's first dog park in West Riviera. This dog park was organized and installed by the West Riviera Neighborhood Group that is no longer in formation at this time, but there was a subcommittee that was formed to help enhance amenities along the urban trail in West Riviera, particularly down Sergeant Street, Malden Street, and New Hall Street. So the murals that exist right now and the Sergeant Street underpasses are one of those amenities along with the dog park, which is right nearby. And so when we, when the committee, the subcommittee established the dog park, it was to be done in phases and to also have rules and regulations as part of the dog park. But as the West Riviera Neighborhood Group dissolved, including the subcommittee, a lot of those responsibilities fell back into the city's hands. And so I am in support and in favor of having rules and regulations for the dog park along with one of the big key areas is to have the dogs registered with the city clerk and so that we know what types of dogs are also frequenting that dog park and to continue to help pay for that dog park to have additional amenities as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rana. Any other proponents, people in favor? Hearing is seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents, people opposed to having rules and regulations of the dog park? Hearing is seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Councillor Janino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to commend my colleague councillor Serino on this motion. You know, as a Ward 6 councillor, since it's in his district, he gets a lot of phone calls about this and I think it's important to notice that, you know, this isn't meant to deter people that have multiple dogs from going and using the dog park. He was getting calls that, you know, doggy daycares were just taking a busload of dogs and dropping them off and they weren't taking care of them and they weren't watching them. And, you know, councillor Serino and myself both have little dogs. So if, you know, he or I were alone walking our dog and, you know, a doggy daycare walks up with seven or eight, they can't control them. It's just not even possible. So I think it's a great motion that he put in and I think it's going to do some good work for the city and hopefully by next year, because of our city clerk, we'll be able to get those dog licenses online. So thank you.
Thank you, councillor Janino. I'm glad you praised the maker of the motion because I went ahead of, ahead of the maker and went to you. So I'm glad that you gave him all those kudos. Councillor Serino.
Thank you, Mr. President. So councillor Janino pretty much summed up the reasons for why I created the ordinance, but I wanted to give a shout out to Ms. Rana because actually that project was the first project, I think, actually maybe the second. The first project we worked on together was the Whalen School Park, the playground. But Ms. Rana was instrumental in the dog park back, geez, about seven years ago. And, you know, as Ms. Rana knows too, when we created that dog park, it was meant to be a neighborhood dog park and not meant for doggy daycares to come and let their dogs, you know, kind of run wild. And Matt, Mr. President, through you to the clerk, I apologize for amending and adding, if we could add one more section language to, and I can get you some language, but basically one thing that was not in there, when we designed the park, we designed it so that little dogs were on one side and big dogs were on the other. And right now, some people are bringing their, their big dogs into the little side and vice versa. So I just want to add language to make sure the dogs are separated. Other than that, thank you, Mr. President. And, yeah, that's all.
Thank you, councillor Serino. Councillor Novoseltsky.
Thank you, Ms. President. Ms. President, I don't normally commend people for doing ordinances because I love writing ordinances myself, but this is a great ordinance. But the only issue I have is that it's a great start because we're going, we have one dog park in the city right now and we are going to have more down the road. And I know we're planning one in my neighborhood. And I think this is a good generic start for any dog park in the city. And I'd like to just reword the title from West Riviera and nothing against West Riviera, it's just that it's a generic item and I just want to make it generic so that it would affect any and all dog parks in the city of Riviera. So that's, and if the clerk could just reword things accordingly, you know, I just think it's a good start for something. Thank you.
Thank you for that friendly amendment and that's, that's great. Any other councillors? Oh, councillor Morabito.
You keep forgetting me, Mr. President. What's going on here? It must be from after last subcommittee meeting. But just want to say, I put forth a motion earlier this year to regrade the Pause and Play Park and I want to thank the mayor for swiftly reacting to that motion. But I want to commend councillor Serino because it's very important that we create an ordinance, because there's nothing on the books, an ordinance that will maintain a safe environment and a clean environment for residents of this city to take their dogs. So kudos to you, councillor Serino.
Thank you, councillor. I appreciate it. Okay, on the motion, on, no, that's, I apologize. This is going to Legislative Affairs and Zoning, a joint committee.
What is the zoning?
Two-minute recess.
Next item on the agenda is the zoning subcommittee report. There was one item to report out on behalf of Chairman Keefe. This is an ordinance relative to ermine farming and beekeeping. This ordinance was amended in subcommittee at the request of the planning board and that was reported out favorably unanimously. So.
On the amended ordinance. Order on a second reading. All in favor, all opposed? So voted. Order on a third and final reading. All in favor, all opposed? As amended? Roll call on engrossment and ordainment.
Shall the city council approve an ordinance relative to urban farming and beekeeping as amended? Councillor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Keefe is absent. Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Rotundo is absent. Councillor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, and council president Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, this ordinance is engrossed and ordained.
Mr. President, it's pleasant, it's pleasant.
Councillor Novoselsky.
Suspension of rules.
Suspension of rules. All in favor, all opposed?
Reconsideration, hope will not prevail.
On reconsideration does not prevail.
Next up is the Ways and Means Subcommittee Report.
Chairman Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, we had five items discussed at the Ways and Means Subcommittee Meeting. The first item was an ordinance amending the departmental revolving accounts. Reason for this amendment was due to just cleaning up some of the scheduled accounts. This was voted out favorably and I asked the council to accept the favorable vote.
On the second reading, all in favor, all opposed? So voted. On the third and final reading, all in favor, all opposed? So voted. On engrossment and ordainment, roll call.
Shall the city council approve an ordinance amending the departmental revolving funds table? Councillor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Keefe is absent. Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, and council president Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, this ordinance is engrossed and ordained.
The, the second item on the agenda was a communication from the city auditor requesting a transfer from the Water and Sewer Stabilization Fund in the amount of $2 million to the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. This was a, a request, a transfer to minimize and minimize the amount of increase to the water rates. Currently, the account has approximately $7.5 million. We are asking a transfer of $2 million out of that account to reduce, minimal reduce the tax rate, the water tax rate to 3.9%. This was voted out favorably.
Right.
Thank you.
On a roll.
Shall the city council approve an? Shall the City Council approve an appropriation in the amount of $2 million from the Water and Sewer Stabilization Fund to the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Keefe is absent. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the appropriation has been approved.
The third item on the agenda was a communication from the city auditor requesting the city council to adopt, uh, the new water rate, uh, for fiscal year 2022. Uh, this is due to the deferral of the MWRA payments because of the pandemic has increased our debt service payments from 5.7 to 6.6. Uh, even with a $2 million transfer, it's still resulting in an increase in our water rates, uh, to 3.9%. Um, it was, uh, something that was difficult to do, um, but I, I think it was needed, and it was voted out favorably with the subcommittee. Thank you, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk.
Shall the City Council adopt a fiscal year 2022 water rate of $4.06 per 100 cubic feet for residential property owners and $6.73 per 100 cubic feet for commercial property owners? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Keefe is absent. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the water rates have been adopted.
Okay. The next item on the agenda was a communication from the city auditor requesting various expenditures from the, uh, Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund. Uh, this consisted of, uh, a various, uh, number of, uh, items, um, totaling approximately $800,000. It was, uh, pay-as-you-go, um, and it was voted out favorably. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, on, on a roll.
Shall the City Council approve a transfer in the amount of $800,000 from the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund to various accounts as reported in the city auditor's June 10th, 2021 verification of funds? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Keefe is absent. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved.
The third item on the agenda was a communication from the city auditor requesting the city council to adopt, uh, the new water rate, uh, for fiscal year 2022. Uh, this is due to the deferral of the MWRA payments because of the pandemic has increased our debt service payments from 5.7 to 6.6. Uh, even with a $2 million transfer, it's still resulting in an increase in our water rates, uh, to 3.9%. Um, it was, uh, something that was difficult to do, um, but I, I think it was needed, and it was voted out favorably with the subcommittee. Thank you, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk.
Shall the City Council adopt a fiscal year 2022 water rate of $4.06 per 100 cubic feet for residential property owners and $6.73 per 100 cubic feet for commercial property owners? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Keefe is absent. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the water rates have been adopted.
Okay. The next item on the agenda was a communication from the city auditor requesting various expenditures from the, uh, Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund. Uh, this consisted of, uh, a various, uh, number of, uh, items, um, totaling approximately $800,000. It was, uh, pay-as-you-go, um, and it was voted out favorably. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, on, on a roll.
Shall the City Council approve a transfer in the amount of $800,000 from the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund to various accounts as reported in the city auditor's June 10th, 2021 verification of funds? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Keefe is absent. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved.
Finally, uh, the last communication was from the city auditor requesting various expenditures from the Water and Sewer Retained Earnings Fund. Uh, there were four items, I believe, being requested that was approved by the Ways, uh, and Means Subcommittee, uh, totaling approximately $415,000. Uh, most of that was infrastructure, work, uh, and a vehicle. Uh, that was all approved by the, the committee. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Madam Clerk.
Shall the City Council approve a transfer in the amount of $415,000 from Water and Sewer Free Cash to various accounts as reported in the city auditor's June 10th verification of funds? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Keefe is absent. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved.
Next item is the Appointments Subcommittee Report. Chairman Guanasso.
Mr. President, early this afternoon, the Appointments Subcommittee met. We have the following items before us. First is a communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of J. Marchese and Sons as a licensed drainlayer. That was voted out favorably. I ask for a roll call.
Shall the City Council confirm the appointment of J. Marchese and Sons as a licensed drainlayer? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Keefe is absent. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the appointments to the Board of Elder Affairs have been confirmed.
Next was a communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Sarah Budak to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I ask that be placed on the table, remain on the table. And then finally, we had before us the communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Mario Gromanas to the Commission on Disability. That was voted out favorably. I ask the committee do the same. Thank you. Roll call.
Shall the City Council confirm the appointment of Mario, Mario Gromanas to the Commission on Disabilities? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Keefe is absent. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the appointment has been confirmed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank members of the committee.
Thank you, Chairman Guanasso.
Calendar item number 23, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of J.R. Vinagro as a licensed drainlayer.
Appointments.
Calendar item number 24, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Earthwork Industries as a licensed drainlayer.
Appointments.
Calendar item number 25, motion presented by Counselors McKenna and Zambudo that the mayor request the Director of Municipal Inspections to develop an eco-friendly baiting procedure for rodent control. Evidence shows that animals and birds of prey within this food chain are dying after ingesting rodents poisoned by the type of bait currently being used.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, uh, what the park rangers, I've talked to the park rangers that are in Belle Isle, um, reservation, and what they're seeing is many dead animals showing up like owls, hawks, and other wildlife. Um, recently, in an article in the Boston Globe, it cited poison that killed an eagle after eating a rat. HYM was asked by the Friends of Belle Isle to use a less invasive poison when they took down their stables. They complied. I am asking the city to follow suit, especially now that we have increased the baiting times. Uh, use in an invasive, and use a less invasive poison and hold utility companies, um, accountable for doing the same thing that are coming into the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. My colleagues will give me some leeway since I'm on this motion. Uh, I think this is a, you know, this is a, a noble goal, and, uh, I signed on to it with my colleague because of it. Uh, however, there are some details we got to work out in, uh, Health and Human Services and Ways and Means. So this, because I, we need to know what the cost effect of this is. So, uh, that's, uh, again, I support this, but we need some details. So that's going to Health and Human Services and Ways and Means.
Calendar item number 26, motion presented by Counselors Morabito, Janino, McKenna, and Serino that the mayor be requested to get, dedicate all parking meter revenue generated at the Central Avenue Sprague Street Municipal Parking Lot for building maintenance and improvement purposes for the Rosetti Cowan Senior Center.
Counselor Morabito.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I spoke with my colleagues, and we're talking about the parking meters that were installed in the municipal lot by the senior center. Um, a lot of the seniors park there daily. Um, as a lot of people know, there could be a lot of improvements made at the senior center, and I think it would be the just thing to do to use that revenue to improve the senior, any improvements to the senior building.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna.
I think this is a great motion, and I approve it definitely. Thank you.
Counselor Rotundo, you have something? Okay. On the motion.
Mr. President.
Sorry. Counselor Visconti.
Okay. Um, I, I think it's a great motion, um, but we have Mr. Viskey here, and, uh, if, uh, I'm not sure if that's even something that can be done. And, uh, I'd like for Mr. Viskey, before we vote on it, uh, to make some input on that, please.
If you wouldn't mind, Mr. CFO.
Uh, not at all. Uh, thank you, Counselor. Richard Viskey, CFO, uh, City of Revere. Um, I did stick around to listen to this motion. I wasn't sure if it was gonna go into committee or be voted on, but, um, there are some hurdles that you may have to, uh, clear to do this. Uh, earlier this evening, we did talk about departmental revolving funds, which allows by law for us to dedicate certain revenues to certain expenditures. However, our meters, receipt reserved, uh, for parking meters, uh, is, uh, used for parking meter operations of the city, so, uh, those dollars are used, uh, to supplement the salaries and expenditures of running the parking department. Well, um, it's a, it's a great motion and, and well-intended. There are some legalities on why we just can't take that money and put it towards certain things, so, um...
Mr. President.
Happy to talk a little bit more about it, but just wanted to give you...
I think we've got enough information. It's going to Ways and Means.
Mr. President.
Uh, Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you. Uh, we can set up a senior center trust fund, if I'm not mistaken.
We'll discuss this in, in, in the Ways and Means Committee.
So I'm putting it forward, and we'll see what the council wants to say about it. I believe there is a resident out there that wants to speak on it.
Thank you, Mr. President. I worked five-plus years to get a parking for residents in order, in order to save our community. It was out of control, people barking all over the place, didn't belong there, didn't belong in the neighborhood. And now, I think any adjustment to this is way premature. We just started the program a few months ago, and I would ask that this not be recognized at this time based on the fact that, give us a year's chance to get this thing working before we start amending it and cretaking it down to a situation where we don't have what we really intended to do in the first place. We really wanted to remove vehicles from a neighborhood that don't really live there. And that's the whole primary purpose of this, to save our neighborhoods. And so with the advent of Airbnb and people having these humongous parties of everyone staying over, it circumvented the neighborhood effect. And so we finally got something in place, and I, and this is no disrespect to my brother colleague, I think the world of him, it's just that I have a real strong opinion on this because of the amount of hours that we put in to get this thing done in the first place. Give us this chance to see this thing work. People are jumping off the board right away here, and it's, they don't know what we went through to get this in the first place. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Guanasso. Councilor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Councilor Janino and I, along with Sergeant Janino and Ashley Melnick, took a look at the parking ordinance, which we really didn't have one, and we rewrote it. And we looked at one of the problems, and one of the biggest problems we saw was visitors' passes. That was the biggest problem, because all these people were coming in, and they were either buying visitors' passes from people, or they were taking visitors' passes and leaving their cars on streets for 10 days. People had three and four visitors' passes from households. It was ridiculous. So we decided, when we were writing the ordinance, that was the biggest problem, we were going to stop the biggest problem. We don't have enough parking in Revere as it is. And to put another 20 cars, or 10 cars, or five cars in a household is just going to add to this problem. So we decided that we would limit it, one parking pass per household, and then if it was a three-family, we would give them three visitors' passes. But to go back to this is going to create the problem again, and we would try and solve the problem. So I am not in favor of this, and I am sorry that it affects people. It affects me. I only have one visitors' pass, and I have three people living in my house, and I, we have to share that visitors' pass. And if you're having a party, or if you're having family over, or if you have a holiday and you have houses, people coming into the city, you can call the traffic department and just say, hey, look, I live at so-and-so place, and I'm having a family party, can you not come down and tag me for the night or for the two nights? And you know what? They'll say, okay. So that's all you have to do. But to put this back where it was is a big mistake. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Rotundo.
Thank you. I can appreciate both sides of the argument. However, with respect to if you have an event at the house and asking parking to not tag, obviously, there's going to be a time when they're going to have to tag. So I guess the question would be, would it be reasonable to consider, obviously, one, temporary parking 10 days, which is in place, in an event parking in which people know when someone's coming over, whether it be a family event or what have you, and that they're assigned during that one time for that one day, or for several days? Because, you know, for example, certain religious events take longer than just a week, and it would be unfair to not permit people to, you know, be in a family member's home. So it's something to think about. Part of the reason to have the parking program, which was finally established, was to stop, basically, the overcrowding in homes. That was the whole purpose of it. It was to prevent people from turning their house into rooming houses, and the city's been doing a pretty good job at stopping that. So if it goes to committee, I'll support an effort to find a medium ground. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councils? No? Madam? Name an address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Asmae Lalamie, formerly of Walnut Avenue. I don't reside here anymore, but I support affordable housing because it wasn't affordable. Anyways, I do still have family living here, so I do visit them multiple times a week, so you can say I live here part-time. One of which being an issue is I, if I'm there visiting, taking care of my elderly parents or my disabled niece, then nobody else from the family can be visiting. So I would like you all to consider that. This is not in terms of any Airbnbs or any visitors, but if family members are limited to the amount of people that can visit them, then that is an infringement of their right. And so, you know, as Councilor Rotundo said, if there's going to be a birthday party, I've never been to a birthday party with one car's worth of guests, so I think that that infringes on the quality of our residents' lives as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Councilor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I think that this is something that we should have the Traffic Commission look into, okay? I went to a birthday party in the Point of Pines Friday evening, and I had all I could do to find one parking space to park my car. Now, there's a lot of houses around that were built, are turned into two families, basement apartments, et cetera, that don't have enough parking. All we're doing here is we're taking, we just re, we just did all the parking in the Point of Pines. Everybody down there is entitled to one sticker, come up to the parking department and get a one visitor pass. Everybody down there that has a car registered in the City of Revere from that street, that address, will get a sticker for their car. In addition, DCR is sending out stickers that are good on the western side of the boulevard from Keery Circle down to Revere Street. I think two stickers, my own opinion, two visitor passes for per household, I said that's defeating the purpose of having resident parking down there, because people will be giving those to friends, whatever might be. Somebody wants to go to the beach on Rice Avenue, then somebody's going to say, hey, don't worry about it. Here's a visitor pass. You can come down anytime you want. And I think it's wrong, it's defeating the purpose, and I don't think it's something that we should even entertain. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Let me just say before I call on the resident and eventually send this to the Public Safety Committee, because there needs to be more discussion on this. We're not going to vote on it tonight. But I think people need to consider, if you're having an affair, that you're going to have more than one person, you make arrangements. You make arrangements to park the cars and maybe shuttle them to the party, you know, but this, this ordinance or this parking situation, resident parking, was created to solve a problem. So I don't know how many times we're going to try to resolve the problem. Name an address for the record.
Ronald Clark, 98 Whitney Ave., Revere. I agree with Arthur that it's way too premature for this change at this point. Right now, they're actually changing for the 24/7 in the pines. They're changing Riverside at the same time. They just made motions to change some of the parking in Riverside. Everything is so upside down right now to add more visitor parking on top of everything else that's happening at the same time. It's just way too premature.
Thank you for your comments. Go ahead, I'll give you the leeway.
Sorry. So I just wanted to make two points. I don't know if it's premature, because my family members have already been ticketed, so if it's, that's the case, if it's going to be premature, then I don't understand why we're ticketing people if we're still trying to figure this out. And my second point was that when this resident parking was first enacted a couple of years ago, we were allowed two visitor passes, and then recently we were, it went down to one. So I just wanted to make that note, that it was not always this case.
I understand that, and we found that there was a problem with the two. But you, you're welcome to come to the subcommittee and make your case, and that's how these things get resolved.
So I'm not saying every household...
So the council has a motion on the floor here that's going into the Public Safety Committee, and that's where the debate will be as to whether or not it succeeds. So if you're interested in coming to that, you'll have all the time in the world to speak to that. Thank you very much.
I mean, I'm not saying every household will have two, but I'm saying they can have the option of having two.
I understand. Thank you very much. Public Safety. Go ahead. Name an address, please. Hit the button, name an address.
My name is Pam. I'm from North Gate Apartments. I agree with Arthur.
Okay.
And the reason why I agree with him is because sometimes, even though I don't drive at all, but my boyfriend has a nurse that comes down every day, and what happens if so many people park, there's no way for her to come in and do what she needs to do.
Right.
Or sometimes the car just stays there, and we don't know if they're a resident or whatever, and it's a problem. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That went to Public Safety.
Calendar item number 28, Motion Presented by Councilor McKenna that the mayor direct DPW to pick up abandoned shopping carts as they are seen on the streets in addition to responding solely to 3-1-1 reports. This will greatly assist the city's ability to keep our streets clean in the most efficient way possible. Abandoned shopping carts are a growing problem and are a blight on our community.
Councilor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know what happened in the last month or so because of COVID lifting the restrictions, but there's carts everywhere, shopping carts everywhere. I just put in, I just had 35 carts picked up in the last three weeks in Beachmont. It's just out of control. So I'm just asking that the DPW, if they, if they're driving by and they see a cart, don't, you know, if, just pick it up. Don't get the request from 3-1-1 first before you pick it up. Just pick it up. And I do think that we need to hold our shopping centers more accountable for their property. We find residents for overgrown grass and litter in their properties. This is littering our city. This is litter. And I just don't understand why they, you call them and you say, can you pick it up at so-and-so address, and they never come down? Because those shopping carts are expensive. They're like $350 apiece. But it's, it's becoming an over, it's, it's just out of control right now, and I just want something to happen immediately before it's just crazy. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the motion? All in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Calendar item 29 that was requested to be withdrawn by Councilor Keefe.
Withdrawn.
Calendar item number 30, Reconsideration of an Ordinance Further Amending the Revised Ordinances of the City of Revere Relative to Baiting Procedures for Rodent Control.
On a roll, right? On reconsideration, on a roll call, please.
Shall the city council reconsider Council Order 21-060, an Ordinance Relative to Baiting Procedures for Rodent Control? Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso?
No.
No, Councilor Keefe is absent, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, this ordinance shall be reconsidered at this time.
Now, do I make my amendment at this time?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm looking to amend the ordinance from 28 days before and 21 days after, respectively, to 18 days for both. Now, the reason I'm telling you this is because I've spent a lot of time researching with professionals, and to be honest, seven days is more than enough time. But I wanted to compromise with my colleague who wanted 21 days, and we, the compromise is 18 days, which is many more days than needed, but is, in the spirit of cooperation, that's what we came up with. So that's my, that's my amended ordinance. I, sorry about that.
We can't do seven days?
Mr. President. We can't do seven days. This is the, the motion on the table is 18 days. So...
That's because you didn't do, you took a week to do the math.
Eighteen, twenty-eight, oh yeah, that's lesser. Okay. Councilor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I didn't oppose this reconsideration, because I did have a discussion with Mike Wells down at ISD about it, and he was telling me the way the permits are issued and the inspections are done, he, his department is one of the last inspector, inspected departments to go down and check out a building. So he said 28 days is definitely too long. He said even 21 days is too long. And right now, it's 10 days. And by the time his department gets to it, it's way beyond anything that we can imagine. And I was even thinking 14 days, you know, but if you want to go to 18, I will go to 18. I have no objections to that. Thank you.
I mean, I'd rather compromise and go to 10. Half of 21 is, you know, 10.5.
Can we just get a number?
That's what I'm saying, let's keep it at 10.
Now I open this up to a free-for-all. Councilor Serino?
Just give me a number and move on.
I mean, the logic is 10.
Councilor Serino. I'm sorry. I got a mutiny on my hands.
We've been through this.
Everybody wants to go to 10 days.
No. Mr. President, we spoke about this.
Yes.
And I am in full support. You know, the original, I believe, was 10 days, correct?
Right.
So we're still increasing it by an additional week. And after speaking with Councilor Novoselsky offline as well, who spoke with ISD, there was a lot that goes, a lot of people don't realize what goes on behind the scenes. We did have a discussion behind the scenes that ISD also agrees, you know, that 10 days, I'm sorry, 18 days is more than enough time as well. So I am good with the compromise. Let's just get it done and do it.
So, so...
Thank you, Councilor.
So where are you? You're on 18, right?
Yes, the, yes.
Okay, so everybody's in agreement?
Yes.
All right. Roll call on 18 days.
Roll call on President Zambudo's amendment to provide for 18 days of baiting prior to and after. Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keefe is absent, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Visconti?
Finally, yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the amendment has been approved.
On the second reading as amended, all in favor, all opposed? So voted. On the third and final reading as amended, all in favor, all opposed? So voted. On the, on engrossment and ordainedment, roll call.
Shall the city council approve an ordinance relative to baiting procedures for rodent control as amended? Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keefe is absent, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky?
Absent.
Is absent. Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
The ordinance as amended has been engrossed and ordained.
Do I hear suspension of the rules anywhere? On the hopes that it will not prevail, reconsideration? Now that can't... This counts, the city council will stand adjourned until June 28.